Well, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's October 20th, 2021, and we'll begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RDB and MCCSC. And Commissioner Jones, did you have? Ah, she's frozen.
Commissioner Thomas, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, I'm sorry, my connection is really bad. I have a statement I'd like to read that I hope can be heard. Would that be okay with you?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I want to very sincerely apologize for an extremely unfortunate incident which occurred during Monday's meeting with the election board. In particular, I want to offer my most sincere apology to Clerk Brown, for whom I have great respect. Beyond that, I would like to apologize to the entire community for what I can clearly see look like extreme disrespect. I can understand that the negotiations between the commissioners and the election board have been such that people might have thought I was intentionally disrespectful to Clerk Brown. As we have been engaged in incredibly important and antics were bad, but I assure you, offering this as an excuse, but the object of my disclosure during the few seconds on Zoom that caused all this disruption was my cat. In fact, it was my cat who turned on the video feed. That clip had absolutely nothing to do with the meeting. And I'm terribly sorry if I gave anyone the impression that it was directed toward anyone in the meeting. I understand that some people will never believe me, but what is important is that I am so incredibly sorry that this respect for all she has accomplished since she became our clerk. And I most sincerely hope that this incident will not derail our efforts to arrange the safest and most efficient election accommodations possible. County. I offer my very most sincere apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And we will, we appreciate that, and we'll turn to department updates next. First up, we have Ms. Cottle from the Health Department.
Good morning. Thanks again for allowing me to be here today. Monroe County will remain in a yellow advisory again this week with high level of community transmission. That is coming in at over 100 per 100,000. So that is considered a high level of transmission. The Board of Health does meet tomorrow at 5:00 PM to review the data and to make decisions about the current regulation. The hope was that we would see greater improvements than what we've seen so far, and that our community spread would be at a more moderate level of transmission by the end of the month. While we have seen improvements and the state is seeing improvements, we have not yet met the goal that we had set. So there will be much discussion about that. As we look at the state map, you will see a lot less red and a lot more yellow. So as a state, we are certainly seeing improvements as well. Vaccinations could certainly help us reach our goal, and we encourage people to get their questions answered, be vaccinated. Vaccinations, the demand for them is increasing, but it is also increasing, for the most part, because of boosters being available. So that's where we're seeing the biggest demand. Currently, we have 60.7% of our eligible population is fully vaccinated. So we continue to see a slow increase in that. We are pleased to see a continued increase, but we would certainly like it to be much higher than that. We are preparing for additional boosters to be approved and for the potential vaccine for five to 11-year-olds. These approvals and directions will likely come by and into that first week in November. They'll come at a little bit different time for each one, but we are making plans now for how we will be able to respond to those. In terms of testing, which we know is still needed, we don't currently have any mobile sites that I'm aware of in the community, but you can visit coronavirus.in.gov to see a full list of available testing options throughout the state. Our community site is ran currently by Gravity Diagnostics. It is on Cook property. So if you go to that map that I just mentioned, that website, look for Cook property, when that will be the Gravity Diagnostic Site. It is located at 500 North Profile Parkway. It is a drive-through. They will accept walk-ups. They can do that. It is outdoors, so weather can affect their availability. They are working to move indoors, so they will not be outside all winter. So indoor location is coming. They are open Tuesday through Saturday, 8 to 4. They do PCR testing at this time with results back by 5:00 PM the next day. You do not need to make an appointment. They will register when you arrive. And for those who are saying, we would like more opportunities, maybe in the evening or an additional day, those kinds of decisions will be made based on demand. So right now, they certainly are seeing people, but they are not extremely busy or by any means at capacity. So demand will drive any changes to their hours or availability. You can also visit that website, and you will see pharmacy locations, other clinics. You may or may not see your private provider on that list, so you can always contact your private provider as well. We do understand that many of the pharmacies and providers may be very busy. So keep in mind that that Gravity Site at Profile Parkway is available Tuesday through Saturday, and you don't need to make an appointment for that. For a vaccine, you can visit ourshot.in.gov, and you can see all of your options throughout the state as well. You will find our Monroe County Public Health Clinic listed on that site as well. So we encourage you to get tested if you need to be tested. And if you started your vaccine series, finish it out. If you haven't started it yet, please consider doing that. And we can get through this together with high vaccination rates and doing all we can to reduce transmission in our community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Just thank you to you and your staff.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, just again, I want to ask people to get their flu shots as well, and if anybody's going for either a regular COVID vaccine or a booster, they can get their flu shot at the same time.
Oh, thank you for that, because I had that in my notes and totally skipped right over it. And in terms of our school clinics, we have seen a lot of interest, especially in the very young, in the younger ages, for flu vaccines, so we are thrilled about that. And one of our plans for that five to 11-year-old group will be to do more school clinics.
That would be great. And if we can, if you can offer some tips and advice next week on Halloween preparations, we would appreciate it. That would be fabulous. Great.
Absolutely. Sure can. And the Board of Animal Health has also put out tips for keeping your pets safe. So we will share both of those.
Nice. Excellent. Great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Emergency Management with our freshly minted Director, Ms. Petroline. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone in Monroe County. I'm actually coming from you, coming to you from location in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I am attending the International Association of Emergency Managers Conference. So I've been getting a lot of really great ideas from best practices of other emergency managers from around the world, actually, and I cannot wait to come back and look at our program and see what we can do. So I've just got a few things for you this morning. Of course, my first two are always reminders. The first one is in regards to our blood drives in October. The first one is actually tomorrow, and it's from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. And then for the second one, it's October 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They're both at the Southeast YMCA. And I would like to ask you to please sign up. The numbers for the sign up is so pretty low for this month. You can do that by going onto our website at co.monroees.in.us. You can go to the Emergency Management page and choose that date for one of those blood drives. And when you click on that, it goes right to the Red Cross website, and you can make an appointment. So please join Commissioner Giffens. I know that last week she said that she had signed up for it, and I'm sure she will back me up and a challenge to you to please go ahead and sign up for those blood drives. Secondly, on my list, those county alerts. So again, go under that, under our website and right on our main page, you just click on that megaphone and sign up for receiving county alerts. You make your own profile and choose the ways that you would like to receive this information. Again, the information that is being sent is most up to date and fastest information about things that are going on related to weather and COVID events and things just like that. So again, if you don't get those alerts, go on our website, click on that megaphone and get signed up. And last but not least, we are still in October, so it's Fire Prevention Month. And today, I'm just going to do a little bit of tips on two ways out. So fires move very fast, and sometimes you might only have two minutes to actually get out of your home when your smoke alarm sounds. So our recommendation is to get your family together, look around your house, and find two different ways out of each room if possible. I know that there are certain rooms, there are homes that only have one way out, like a bathroom, but if you have those rooms that have a window in it and another door, you know, talk about it. Talk about the best and fastest way to get out of that room. And then make sure that your doors and windows are not blocked by furniture. You want to get out as fast as possible when you do have a fire. And then also, after you've chosen your escape routes, make sure you find somewhere in your yard, like usually it's a big tree or a mailbox that's significantly farther away from your house, but find a meeting spot so that when your whole family is out and safe of that house, you all find each other, give those hugs and kisses that we all know that we probably be getting. Make sure you have that meeting spot. Probably the most important thing on my, my little list here today is to practice it. I actually knew a fire chief that would practice by setting alarm off at his house at 3:00 AM, and his teenagers loved that. So you might want to not go to that extreme, but I know that there are people out there that kind of get enjoyment out of doing that for their family. So I hope you take these tips and implement them at home, and that is all I have. Thank you so much for having me.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Petroline. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I appreciate your tips of the month. And fire, of course, is especially scary, so it's good to be hearing all these tips. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Anybody that gives blood on a regular basis gets these email requests from American Red Cross, and they have just been coming fast and furious recently because there is a true blood shortage in our area. So I encourage anybody who can to please get to the YMCA tomorrow or Friday and make that blood donation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Petroline. We appreciate you. Next up, we have an update from Highway. Good morning, Ms. Ridge.
Good morning. So we have, we are going to be paving on Bar Road starting Monday, the 25th. The road will be closed during the day so that we can do this in what we call one pole, so you don't have a seam down the middle of the road, which can collect water. We will have that out to our regular emergency notifications on our weekly closings and then to the school systems also. We've started the fall trimming for the low limbs and brush on different roads throughout the county. Of course, we continue to patch potholes and mowing where it's needed. And then our mechanics have been assigned to begin the process of getting our fleet ready for the winter. So, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We will be also doing some paving in the Rock East Road area. We're waiting for a contractor to get back with us on what date that will be. And then that will also be on our weekly notifications. So, and that will wrap pretty much the paving season up this year.
Wow. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, you must have had an extended paving season this year with all the good weather we've had.
We have, and it's worked out good, and we kind of had to see where our budget numbers ended up. And so we were actually able to throw in Bar Road. That was kind of on the, our wish list, and so we were able to make that happen. And so, yeah, because the plant usually closes around the first week of December. So that'll be, what, six weeks or so?
Yeah.
Commissioner Giffens?
Just thank you and to all the Highway crew for doing such good work.
Yeah. I will pass that along.
Yeah, and a big shout out to whoever put the stripe down the middle of my street. This, I think, is the first time I've ever had one. It's nice.
Nice.
I didn't even, didn't even really miss it until it was there, and I kept thinking, this is so good. So, so thank you for that.
Yep, our strippers, I think, have been in town for the last couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, I've noticed it on quite a few roadways, and it really is a great safety measure. I'm, you know, you don't really realize it until it's not there. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we have Director of Technical Services, Mr. Evans. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. It is still October. It is still Cyber Security Awareness Month, and I am here with your tidbit of cybersecurity. Just as a reminder to encourage employee participation at the end of the month, we are going to have a puzzle that will be distributed, and the first person to submit the solution to the puzzle will win this valuable prize. A, let's get a close-up of that so you can see a trophy in the smallest letters possible that says cyber puzzler. Also, a gift card, a $50 gift card to Amazon. Now, it's ironic that we're talking about gift cards, because that is the topic that I bring to you this morning, gift card scams. Now, the reason why this is such an important thing to talk about is one of the statistics that's kind of disturbing about gift card scams is a quarter of the American population are not aware that gift cards are used as currency in a, in a large group of these scams. And just getting the word out of that can prevent people from falling for gift card scams. Essentially, scammers like using gift cards because it can be untraceable. The mark goes out and purchases a gift card, and then while on the phone with the scammer, gives them the numbers on the back of the gift card, which then essentially transfers the funds to the scammer in a manner that can't be tracked later on, which is why this is a popular form of payment for these things. Now, the problem is that this, this whole thing gets combined with some really disturbing scams that they run. One of the common ones is the IRS scam. Someone will get a phone call from someone who purports to be an IRS officer, saying that you are, you know, $15,000, and it rears on your taxes. And the only way to resolve that and not have a warrant be issued for your arrest is to go and buy a gift card and transfer that to the person on the phone. Now, on the face of it, that seems like an absurd thing. You would think most rational people would be like, why would a government agency ask me to buy a gift card to pay my debt to them? And the answer is none. No government agency is ever going to ask you to buy a gift card for that. But the truth of the matter is, these guys are, these scammers are very skilled at the psychological game, and they get the person on the phone to be, they take advantage of what's called fear, uncertainty, and doubt. And I have seen very highly educated, highly intelligent people fall for this scam and spend thousands of dollars on these gift cards. So the important message that I'd like to get out to everyone listening today is, if you're ever in a situation where someone asks you to pay your debt, whether it's a legal debt or paid for products or services by going out and buying a gift card, that should be an automatic red flag. Last year, these types of scams really took off with the pandemic lockdown and with people kind of being isolated and lonely and turning to online shopping. This type of scam really took off, and it's looking like just the reported cases of this scammed Americans out of over $200 million last year, which was up from like $74 million the year before. And that's only the cases that get reported. You got to figure, there's all sorts of cases of this that go unreported. We are probably looking at half a billion dollars a year that gets lost to these kinds of scams. So the important thing to remember, don't buy gift cards for anything other than gifts. So anyway, next week will be the last week of the month. I'm going to be teaming up with Kate Petroline from Emergency Management, and we're going to celebrate both Cyber Security Awareness Month and Fire Safety Month and discuss what happens when you're escaping your burning house and you receive a scam phone call at the same time. So you won't want to miss that. We'll see you next week. Thanks.
That's amazing. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I can't wait till next week.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I guess we're going to light a fire under somebody for something. I don't know, but I look forward to receiving the puzzle from you.
All right. We'll see you next week.
Great. Thank you so much. Awesome. Any other, are there any other department heads who wish to offer an update? Raise your hand if you do. Check here. Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is the general public comment section. This is a public comment for items that are not on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. When you hit 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, you have 30 seconds to wrap up your thoughts. This three-minute time limit also applies to items, other items on our agenda where we take comment. And so with that, I'd like to see if anyone wishes to offer public comment for items not on our agenda. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or star nine if you're on the phone. Okay, it looks like we have Carol Wilson.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. You notice my camera's blocked? Okay. Well, it's probably blocked on your end, but it's blocked here. Because unlike Gloria Swanson, I am not ready for my close-up. Zoom meetings present a whole flock of difficulties, including misunderstandings, and that's what's happened. I very much appreciate Commissioner Jones' statement this morning. I also received a communication from Clerk Brown, who I think has done such a wonderful job conducting our elections. Okay. I admit I'm prejudiced because I've worked there during some of them. But she works so hard. She does work for the people of Monroe County regardless of party. She just wants to make sure everything's fine. So I really regret this whole thing. I've been a cat owner. Thanks to God, I don't knit, but, you know, trust me, I know what they can do. The second thing I wanted to address is a problem that we all kind of experienced this morning with Commissioner Jones being able to speak, you know, freely and fluently. We've got to do something about rural broadband. I don't know where Lee lives, but it's got to be out there someplace. So we've got to do something about that if we're going to continue having this sort of situation. I don't see Zoom going away. I would much rather see you all in person. And the third thing I want to say is, we need to get Eric Evans to host Saturday Night Live. That's all my contributions for this morning. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have Trutti Rana.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Great. Thank you. So again, I am speaking as a Monroe County voter, and I'm also a member of the Monroe County Election Board, for those of you who don't know me, but speaking on behalf of myself during this public comment session and as a voter. I'm commenting today to express my deep disappointment and concern about what I see as a longstanding pattern of disrespect, both to our county clerk and her expertise, but also to the members of the voting public and to our community, as reflected in action on issues of critical concern to many of us in Monroe County. So over the last several months, we and many, many other members of our community have been sounding the alarm about the grave risks that voting rights face in this country and county, risks that reigns from the Supreme Court decisions overturning key parts of the laws that created Jim Crow and have disenfranchised so many. And we also know that we face increasing risks and threats from potential bad actors. While we've seen words of acknowledgement and statements in support of voting rights and statements in support of Clerk Brown and her expertise, we have not seen action or implementation of these words. So many of the lessons, you know, as you know, I always refer back to my background as a lawyer and a professor. One of the lessons we learn from looking at the words of our founding fathers and other statements is that words alone don't matter. Over our history, we see over and over again that the words in our constitution mean nothing when they're not implemented, and especially lack implementation for marginalized communities. We also know that a failure to recognize and address the dynamics of power and race, among others, can negate not only words, but even efforts for change when they're made without consideration of how those dynamics affect different people. So in our county, I see that while the Commissioners have made statements in support of voting rights, and we spent a great deal of time going back and forth over the plans that Clerk Brown has so carefully not only designed, but also achieved bipartisan support for. But I felt like as of our, the end of our election board meeting we had on Monday, we were almost right back where we started. There's been some movement and shuffling around, but no concrete commitments for expanding electoral central either now or over time. The analogy that comes to my mind is that when a child is told to eat their vegetables and tries to move them around the plate to make it look like they've eaten something when they have not. So furthermore, we heard early on from an election lawyer who explained that the process of opening new voting locations should include deep consideration, like equity studies of how different locations and measures affect communities of color, as well as ADA access and other concerns. We haven't seen that here in any of the suggestions made by the Commissioners, nor have we seen substantial engagement with the plan designed by Clerk Brown, which was actually prepared in deep consultation with experts, applicable rules, and our public. So I believe we still have time to preserve and even expand access to our constitutional right to vote in Monroe County, but we need to act soon, and our voters deserve action and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to offer comment for items not on our agenda? Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll come back to, it looks like Commissioner Jones had to step out. Ms. Giffens, Commissioner Giffens, would you make a motion on the next agenda item, please?
Of course. Move to approve the minutes of October 13th, 2021.
I will second that. Any comments, corrections on the minutes for October 13th? Any comments, corrections on the minutes for October 13th? Okay. Seeing none?
Yeah.
You've already sent it in, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Seeing none then. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval minutes for October 13th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffins?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable October 20th, 2021 and payroll October 22nd, 2021.
Second?
We have a motion and a second and Mr. Cockrell is stepping in today for Jordan Miller to produce, provide our accounts payable and payroll numbers. So thank you for that.
Yes, Jordan's at the Auditor's Conference, but he gave me a nice little outline of what's going on. The total for the AP claims is $997,546.31. There are two larger claims in that. One is for Anthem for $237,973.83 and that's for October premium claims and fees. The second is a tax sales surplus for $184,811.22. We also have payroll being approved. It's a total is $1,622,043.3 with the direct cost being 70.4% of that and the indirect cost being 29.6%.
Great, thank you so much. Let's ask some really tough questions of Mr. Cockrell about some detailed. Commissioner Jones?
I think I'll let him off the hook.
Commissioner Giffins?
Oh, that was my line. Come on. Thanks. Now, I always appreciate getting the things in advance so that we can review them.
Excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. If there is, raise your hand in the Zoom screen or press star nine on the phone. I do not see any. So, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims docket accounts payable October 20th, 2021 and payroll October 22nd, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffins?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent, thank you so much. And our next item, please, in new business.
Move to approve Deckard Land Surveying Agreement for Section Corner Perpetuation Services. Fund name, Surveyors Corner Perpetuation. Fund number 1202, in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Emre Randolph here, our surveyor. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello. Nice to be here today. I hope everyone is staying nice and warm. I rode my bicycle in today and without my gloves and my hands were quite freezing by the time I got to the office. But now to the request at hand. I'm here today seeking approval for the Deckard Land Surveying Professional Section Corner Perpetuation Service Agreement to help maintain the public land surveying system in the county. This is in line with the heightened standards I've been able to successfully implement. And the proposed survey project is to perpetuate the location of section corners, quarter sections and center corners by marking and verifying the existing monuments or reestablishing the corners with a new monument if necessary and four sections in Township Nine North Range Two West as outlined in Exhibit A. Any new monument set will have geodetic controls for each corner noted and provided to the surveyor's office. The deliverables include a monument record for each monument, a survey or report and a survey drawn to scale. The records are to be provided, both physical copies and PDF copies. The surveyor's report and survey is to be recorded in the recorder's office and this is all paid out of a dedicated fund, as noted, the Section Corner Perpetuation Fund within the line of geodetic control. And I'm seeking your approval today and here for any questions.
Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, not being a surveyor, I'm not too sure what geodetic means.
We're just getting a Latin long. So we're actually going to be getting that exact location on the ground. Does that explain it? It basically ties into our coordinate system here in the state and they provide us coordinates that can then reestablish these monuments. Many, or I'd say majority of our section corners in the county do not have geodetic control. So if they're distorted or obliterated, this is one of the best solid methods to reestablish that monument. So in hands, or we're basically doing a better job of preserving the integrity of property rights across Monroe County with this and it'll be certified as well.
So is this an actual physical implement or is it more like noted measurements or something?
I guess I'm not exactly following your question the greatest. Sorry. I, this is, this is just, oh, it's just establishing that control. So they have to tie into the network system and when they go out there and they collect that for that one point. But we're actually doing an entire perpetuation of that square mile, that section. And so as we go every half a mile of where these section corners are, we're going to be doing that on a physical survey that you would be familiar with, with your time reviewing those during, on the plan commission, that that will be presented and all of those points will be within that survey, also the surveyor's report that will give the theory of location of why they're holding those specific corners. And then the geodetic control will then be provided and a separate document, a monument record will be provided that will give those coordinates, both with the survey, but both with the monument record too. So whenever another surveyor comes to do a retracement, a retractment of that property, they can use these documents to go and set up and then survey out private property if that kind of explains it.
Yeah, thank you. That much more. Yeah, I think I understand it now. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffins? Do you have comments or questions?
So when I looked at the map that you included, it's my understanding there were, is it 25 markers in it all that go on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And right now, as, as we're kind of launching this, we've kind of, I worked with the surveyors to identify the areas and as we start moving forward, we might reprioritize what areas in the county that we do want to kind of perpetuate under this type of service agreement. So yeah, I just wanted to let you know that moving forward, we might, I might come to you to discuss kind of establishing a long-term goal of perpetuating the county's boundaries. But right now, this is just kind of getting it up off the ground and moving forward. And I just wanted to make one other comment. I plan to do three of these service agreements, hopefully in the next several months. So I'm curious if you would like me to come back for each individual agreement or should we establish something to the effect if it doesn't exceed $15,000, I could just move forward with some of these agreements. So that's a question I want to, some guidance so I know how to bring that. I could bring it to you at a work session to discuss further, but I'd just like some guidance on that.
Yeah, so this, this particular agreement is with a particular agency entity and it is also not to exceed 15,000. So it is one agreement for this amount. So I would recommend you, you would take this to whoever your legal representative is in county legal and work out whether or not you can do the next two together. But you, this will, this is only one agreement for this one specific just service that's outlined in this description.
Right, and Margie Rice, our attorney, just said the same thing. So, yeah, so I might group them together right now. It's, the other agreements are contingent with the council's approval of appropriating more funds for my corner fund. So I'll come back with it to you.
And, and there's no need to come to a work session unless it's something really different or you want to, you know, the work session's really for new programs or to talk through some ideas. It's really not, it's not required to come to a work session for everything that comes to our agenda, so.
Perfect. And I worked with Dave Schilling with standardizing this. So then the new agreements will be pretty much similar, hopefully a little less than cost, but we'll see.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in the Zoom screen or click star nine on your phone. Bernie Gertas, it looks like. Good morning, is that Bernie?
It is. Thank you for, I didn't realize Tron had this in front of you today, or I may have attended anyway, but a couple of things. Geodesy is just the measure of the unique shape of the earth. The earth is a potato, right? So you can't measure straight lines, you can't, you can't just measure from here to there over long distances and long courses due to curvature and, and just a bunch of other things that I can't even begin to communicate and understand properly. But the other thing I wanted to point out is, you know, the states, there's state statute that says that 5% of the section corners in any county have to be perpetuated in a year. So theoretically, in a 20-year period, you've at least perpetuated. And the way Tron keeps his documentation and the quality of the survey work that, you know, Monroe County actually enjoys and has for decades, they're just a huge tool for the land surveyors, but also the public because it is a value that goes into their pocketbook whenever work is done. And there's very few people that don't have the services of a land surveyor in some part of their personal or professional life. So I commend Tron for the work he's doing. It is a statutory requirement and managing these funds is important. And I personally, as a member of the plan commission, as a member of the public and a professional in the community, appreciate it very much. That's all I've got.
Thank you so much. All right, see if there's anyone else that has an item, comment on this item. See any? So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Deckard Land Surveying Agreement for Section Corner Perpetuation Services?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffins?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance 2021-50 to repeal the Juvenile Perdiem Fund. Fund name, Juvenile Perdiem Fund, Fund Number 4903, in an amount that is not applicable.
Second?
We have a motion and a second and we have Ms. Rice joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is a free item in that it costs the county nothing. What we're essentially doing is asking to dissolve a fund that keeps these juvenile perdiem. It's over time, it's often been called just county perdiem, but there are reimbursements that YSB gets and we've kept it in a separate fund. We used the money on for some YSB projects. The purpose of the fund no longer exists and the council would like to have it dissolved so that those funds would go back in the general fund and could help fund the WIS project. So I did find in researching this fund that there was some legislation approved by both the council and the commissioners. Typically, the commissioners would be the only ones approving this sort of thing, but because historically there were the handprints of the council and the commissioners, I put signature lines for both so that in the future, if anybody ever asked, they won't have any doubt that both the council commissioners wanted this dissolved. Typically, the way you undo something is the same way you do it. So that's why, if you are curious, that's why signature lines are both for the council commissioners. So happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No real questions. I just think this is a very good idea and I'm glad that the council is doing it.
Commissioner Giffins?
Is this something that Judge Galvin has been involved with and has it been reviewed with him?
Yes, the council liaisons that are assigned to the YSB and to the courts did reach out to, to Vicki Tavittow and to Judge Galvin. And I spoke with Vicki. Her only concern was to make sure that we were able to continue accounting in a separate line as, you know, as her money comes in, she wants to be able to reconcile. And so I did check with the auditor's office and that will be absolutely fine. So there will be a separate line, so we'll still see how the money's coming in.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in the Zoom screen. Councilmember McKim, good morning.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to thank the commissioners for considering this request so quickly. The Juvenile Perdiems Fund and the perdiem revenues included here have served their purpose. They allowed us and you to build a major expansion of our youth services facilities without going into debt or raising taxes. And since there are no statutory or local restrictions on the use of this funding, it really makes no sense to segregate them anymore. So by dissolving these funds, you're giving the council more flexibility to meet our obligations, including implementing a major employee compensation project. So thank you again for considering this so quickly.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, we have Ms. Purdy here to take the role for us. If you would please call the roll on Ordinance 2021-50.
Certainly. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffins?
Yes.
Motion passes, three to zero.
Thank you so much, Ms. Purdy. Next item, please.
Move to approve Infrastructure Systems, Inc. for Lori Lane Culvert Replacement Project. Fund name, Bridge, Fund Number 1135, in the amount of $419,830.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second and we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us all about it.
Good morning again. So we did open bids and we awarded this contractor, they were the most responsive, responsible and lowest bidder. So this is actually the contract to have the work completed this fall. The project is located on the east side of Bloomington and it's not anticipated to be a road closure, it's actually to be done under the conditions of boring under the roadway. So we're excited to get this project done. I think it's actually been on the books as long as I've been at the department, so that's a long time. So we are thrilled to move forward and get this done.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'm glad it's happening.
Commissioner Giffins?
How, how big of a culvert are they putting in?
I don't have that size on, right in front of me. It's a pretty big project. There were some challenges of doing this project. Of course, this is a subdivision that has one way in, one way out. So that was a big reason why it had been delayed for so long. And then we had to go through minimal right-of-way services, but I can get to the size of that culvert and be happy forward that on to you.
You're great, thanks. Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say it is, it is an engineering marvel to be able to put in a culvert without closing a road.
It is. It's a, we actually did it on South Shore Drive a couple of years ago to where we did the boring under that road and we didn't have to close it. That was another project that had been on the books for a little while and just tried to overcome some of the challenges with it and, and it worked out really well. So hopefully this one will go just as good.
Excellent, thank you for this. I'm sure the folks there will be very happy too in that neighborhood. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, Ms. Purdy, will you please call the roll on the motion to approve Infrastructure Systems, Inc., Lori Lane Culvert Replacement Project?
Certainly. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffins?
Yes.
Motion passes, three, zero. Motion passes, three, zero.
Thank you so much. Uh, next item, please.
Move to heading home twenty twenty-one letter of support.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, uh, and we have Ms. Purdy to tell us all about it. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry.
There you go.
There you go, yes, um, good morning. Uh, this is a, um, letter of support between, for you guys, um, for United Way and the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County. And, um, this is, uh, an agreement that, um, much like the, um, the, the dissolution of the perdiem fund, this is going to require signatures from both the Board of Commissioners and the County Council, um, because we're talking about the use of the American Rescue Plan at dollars. And what, what your, um, what this letter does is, um, states that you are committing one point two million dollars, um, to be used specifically for programming and expenses incurred prior to January first, twenty twenty-four, for this project, um, that is addressing homelessness within our community. Uh, the Board of Commissioners and the County Council are also supportive of providing an additional one point two million dollars within the next three years to provide the seed money necessary to ensure the sustainability of this project. Um, the one point, the additional one point two million dollars that is referenced, um, after the, um, what, the, the use of one point two for programming and expenses, is that, um, the seed money, um, is not something that we can directly use our dollars for, um, however, uh, the council and, uh, my understanding is the commissioners believe that the, that Monroe County government can in fact find, um, those dollars to help support and make sure that this is a sustainable project. All of this is, um, subject to council appropriation, um, but it's something that United Way and the Community Foundation, um, would greatly appreciate, so they can move forward with their project.
Right, thank you so much, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is such a critical program for the county, and, uh, it's wonderful that United Way and the Community Foundation are taking it on, and I'm very pleased to do whatever we can to support it and help it move forward.
Commissioner Giffens?
Uh, well, both Ms. Purdy and I were involved in the heading home, um, twenty twenty-one plan, and this is not just to help people who are homeless, but also to prevent homelessness, um, we would, we truly, the kind of the motto within the heading home stuff is to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating, so, um, we, we really do want to prevent homeless much, homelessness as much as possible.
Right, and I will note just, um, for the record, that all of us have been involved, as well as the council, which has been great, um, and to different, in different activities in different ways. Um, and this is really, um, as Commissioner Giffens notes, this is really going to be a fund that helps with things like down payments and, um, um, and securing mortgages and rents and things like that, it's really going to be that bridge to get people, um, out of poverty, um, out of homelessness specifically, um, which is really great, and that's something that the Affordable Housing Group talked about, um, last week with us, and, um, that commission, um, and, and this, and their interests and their, uh, wish list dovetails very nicely with the, uh, with this plan itself, and so a huge thanks to everybody who's worked on this, uh, across the community, it's been a really amazing group of people, um, and it came out of the decision to focus, uh, all of our efforts and energy into one place, rather than trying to support a number of different groups who were all well-intentioned, but seem to be competing for dollars to actually kind of put this, put this together so that we could all work together, so really a good thing. Um, all right, uh, let's see if there's any public comment on this item, raise your hand in the zoom screen. Seeing none, Ms. Purdy, will you please call the role on the heading home twenty twenty-one letter of support?
Yes, Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes, three to zero.
Thank you so much, uh, and now we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve twenty twenty-two Monroe County Government Holiday Schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, um, Ms. Purdy.
Yes, uh, this is just basically a housekeeping issue for, for us, and, um, this is providing the holiday schedule, um, for twenty twenty-two.
Right, and I will note that, um, for the record, the dates are January third, January seventeenth, April fifteenth, May third, May thirtieth, June twentieth, July fourth, September fifth, November eighth, November eleventh, November twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, December twenty-third, twenty-sixth, and thirtieth, and those are all twenty twenty-two dates. Uh, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to thank Dina Delauter Myers for the work she puts in every year on, uh, creating our holiday schedule.
Yeah, I, I, even though I read through the list until you said it out loud, I didn't realize that one of the holidays was on April fifteenth, when all our taxes are due, so, you know. Yeah.
Yeah, um, that's not why. Uh, no, yeah, a huge, I, I agree, uh, Commissioner Jones, um, Ms. Delauter Myers has done a great job, um, keeping us on task and getting us, getting this together every year, and we appreciate that so much. Um, and let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Probably not. I don't see any, so Ms. Purdy, will you please call the role on the Monroe County Government Holiday Schedule for twenty twenty-two?
Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes, three, zero.
Thank you so much. Uh, next item, please.
Move to approve twenty twenty-one dash forty-two Hamilton Rezone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have, uh, Drew Myers here from Planning, good morning.
Morning, commissioners, can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
All right, let me share my presentation here in one second. All right, can you see the screen okay?
We sure can, thank you.
All right, so this is the Hamilton Rezone Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, or R E Z dash twenty-one dash four. And, um, this was forwarded with a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission, uh, by a vote of seven to zero, and this was in the September Plan Commission meeting, so it is here before you now at the formal session. All right, and overall, it is a request to rezone the property from State Residential One to Agricultural Rule Reserve. It is for a property totaling one hundred thirty-four point five acres, it's located in Bloomington Township. It's at thirteen hundred West Bell Road, and the purposes of this rezone is to allow for a future sliding scale subdivision. Um, the sliding scale subdivision option for property in Monroe County, um, is limited to specific zoning districts available to the Ag RR District, the CR District, and the FR District. So being in, uh, State Residential One, they would not be able to perform the sliding scale subdivision. Um, they would only be able to do the minor subdivision, which only allows, um, ten acre lot sizes, um, on property that's serviced by septic. So in order to do, um, smaller lot sizes, which the, uh, petitioner is intending to do, um, they need to have the ability to do the sliding scale subdivision. So basically, what they're intending to do is subdivide off a two point five to three acre tract from the, uh, for the existing homestead site on the property, and then the remaining acreage, um, petitioner has stated that they would like to keep as classified forest and, uh, not develop it in the future. Uh, I will say that, um, a road width waiver may be required, uh, for this subdivision, um, if it goes through. Um, road width waiver is required for sliding scale subdivision petitions when the road width is, um, less than eighteen feet in width. So, um, that would trigger a review from the Plan Commission as well for the site, for the subdivision petition. Um, there's also some communication with the planning staff that, with the petitioner, that, um, likely the construction of a cul-de-sac at the end of West Bell Road would be required, uh, to promote a safe turnaround, uh, capability for emergency vehicles through the subdivision petition as well. Um, but those two items, uh, road width waiver and cul-de-sac are more for the subdivision, and today we're just talking about the rezone. So here's the location map, thirteen hundred West Bell Road. See I sixty-nine here along the, um, eastern side of the property. And then here we have the zoning map and the comprehensive plan, so currently zoned State Residential One with Agricultural Rule Reserve right next door to the west, and then the comprehensive plan has it designated as farm and forest. Here we have a slope map, um, you can kind of see the homestead site down here at the bottom of the screen. Um, so this is where that two point five to three acre, uh, tract will be subdivided off the remainder of the property, uh, and you can see that there's quite a bit of slope greater than fifteen percent, um, as well as some designated floodplain along this creek, um, area, so, um, a decent amount of property is not buildable, um, but there is some buildable area up through here. Um, through the subdivision process, the petitioner would have to, um, show access to this second larger lot, um, so that it could be a buildable site, um, that's part of the subdivision control ordinance requirements, however, petitioner has stated that they do not have any intentions of developing it, um, as of now. All right, site conditions and infrastructure. Um, again, I said it's a one hundred thirty-four point five acre tract, um, it's got some existing structures on the, on the property, um, and the, um, and there is, uh, that Pima floodplain stream, uh, features there, lots of steep slopes as well, um, and MS four coordinator, um, has stated that she doesn't have any comments regarding the rezone. Um, it's not located in a critical drainage area, and there are no apparent karst, um, so, um, she would likely perform more of a review for the sliding scale subdivision petition once it came through the planning office. All right, here we have the petitioner's letter to the, um, planning office with respect to, um, petitioning for the rezone, and their intentions with the property, and then over here on the right side of the screen, we have the, um, proposed plat. Um, this is just a draft, um, just to kind of show the, uh, uh, purpose of the rezone. See down here, the bottom right-hand corner, that, um, tract that they planned to subdivide off. I'm also included, the use comparison here between RE one and Ag RR, there is a, uh, large increase in uses that are allowed in the agricultural rule reserve zone compared to the State Residential One Zone. Um, but again, the petitioner has stated that they are planned to, um, not really develop the second lot and just have that, um, one smaller two point five to three acre, uh, homestead lot for residential purposes. All right, so recommendation, um, planning staff had recommended approval for the rezone request based on findings, fact, and subject to Monroe County Highway and MS four coordinator reports. And then, as I stated, the Monroe County Plan Commission in September voted seven to zero to forward this petition to the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation, so now I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you so much, uh, comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to really thank the petitioner for taking this on, um, this sounds like preservation of ideal habitat for species other than humans, and, um, it seems that we're losing a lot of that in this county, so I really appreciate someone making the effort to make sure it stays that way.
Thank you, Commissioner Giffens.
Um, no, I, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Myers came before us last week and talked about this, so it's given me time to review it more and think about it, so I'm fine, thank you.
Right. Right, uh, so let's see if there's, um, anyone, well, first, let's see if the petitioners here, uh, if they wish to speak. Just raise your hand in the zoom screen. All right, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, seeing none on either side, um, final comments, um, Commissioner Jones? Anything to add?
I'm very in support of this.
Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you.
Um, I will say that I, um, agree with, uh, Commissioner Jones, that this is a much-needed um, and really something to be applauded, um, to, to preserve this space is so important for the whole county, um, and really thank the petitioner for bringing this forward. I would ask the planning staff to do whatever they can to ensure that that this is done in a way that is as low a cost as possible for this petitioner. For example, if, if, uh, we can find a way to do a conservation easement, um, on the second larger parcel, uh, that would be great, so you don't need driveway access, um, I, I would hope we don't need to have them build a cul-de-sac, that maybe there's a way to do a turnaround or something, um, I just would really like to encourage the planning staff to do everything they can to make this as affordable and as stress-free as possible, uh, when this person is really thinking about the community. Uh, we need to think about them, so if we can do anything to help them, I would certainly appreciate it. Uh, and with that, um, we'll come back, uh, to, uh, the board for a vote. Um, Ms. Purdy, will you please call the role on the, um, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, the Hamilton Rezone?
Personally, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion passes, three, zero.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And so with that, we have, uh, come to the last, um, item on our agenda, and, uh, we don't have any appointments today, I have a few announcements. Uh, the Board of Commissioners has set, uh, trick-or-treat hours for Halloween, October thirty-first, from five thirty to eight thirty. Um, and again, uh, Ms. Cottle will be here to talk about safe Halloween enjoyment, uh, in the age of COVID, um, next week, um, at our Commissioners' meeting. Um, also a reminder to county residents, as long as the governor's emergency order is in place, which for now is at least through the end of October, um, that you have access to the Township Assistance Fund, the Board of Commissioners worked with the council to come up with the Township Assistance Fund, and that fund, um, is utilized and, um, um, addressed by our township trustees, every, uh, resident of the county lives in a township, uh, please contact your township trustee if you're having difficulty paying for things like rent or utilities or other basic necessities. They have a lot of resources available to help you, including this Township Assistance Fund. Um, also, um, we are taking applications for, uh, boards and commissions. Um, please go to co.munro.in.us and take a look at the, um, uh, all the boards and commissions that we have, uh, and if you're interested in applying for any of them, now is a great time to do it, because we typically have to make these appointments, a number of them at the beginning of, uh, twenty twenty-two, which is surprisingly just around the corner. I know I'm surprised, but I'm surprised. Um, also a note, um, for those residents who are targeted for annexation, we have information on our website at co.munro.in.us, um, there is, um, an effort, uh, to collect signatures of remonstrance, if you have questions about how to remonstrate, we advise you to contact the auditor, but there's also some information on our website as well about the process. Um, there are a couple of, uh, public remonstration opportunities, uh, in addition to coming to the courthouse, uh, North Door, eight to four, Monday through Friday, the file of remonstrance, you could also go to the county fairgrounds in the community building, uh, which is right off Airport Road there, uh, today, uh, or Friday, from five thirty to seven thirty. today or Friday from 5:30 to 7:30. Or you can call 812-361-4424 or contact stopbloomingtonannexation@gmail.com for information on petition, remonstrance petition signing events. But the fairgrounds, they've got a table set up for each area and they have notaries present as well. So all, everything you need is right there, including a lot of great information. So unless my colleagues have anything else. Yes, Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, too. Our, our community is gonna lose.
I'm sorry. You might, you might want to turn your video off because your, your audio is breaking up.
Okay. I want to say best of luck to Kathy Crabtree, who's leaving the community. She has been a very important part of what's gone on in this area for a long time. Although I'm, I'm really sad that she's leaving and I wanted to tell her that she's been part of our Affordable Housing Commission and always on top of things. I also wanted to thank everyone, especially the volunteers who came out to the Hoosier Hills Food Bank book sale this last week. That's their second largest fundraiser of the year. And the, being out there and seeing what the volunteers do, how they organize things, the dedication of the volunteers and staff just was incredible. So thank you to everybody who participated in that.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a great event. I know we all, three of us volunteered there. And it was really, it was a lot of fun to work with the public and work with a lot of books, which is always my element. You could tell. But on Saturday, I was there for a second volunteer shift and they had over a thousand people, which was a record breaking number, which was great. So. But it was a great event and we appreciate everybody who came out and purchased and everybody who donated and all the organizers. Because that takes a lot of work. It is a lot more work than it looks like. So, yeah, excellent. All right. Thank you so much. All right. So with that, we're going to come back for our work session. How about 11:25, start our work session? Or do we need longer?
I, I'm afraid I have to make contact with an employee.
Okay, how about 11:30? Or do you need, what time would you like to come back?
Let's say 11:30.
Okay. So we'll come back at 11:30 for our work session. And with that, this meeting is adjourned and our next meeting is October 27th, 2021 at 10 a.m. All right. Thank you, everyone, and please get vaccinated.